Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How about this, great night tonight. I had a presentation earlier by our Butler County Emergency Management people to present to us how good they keep our cities safe in supporting our police and fire units. Now, welcome to the meeting of June 9th, 2025. And I ask that you stand for the pledge and allegiance and the prayer by Councilman Tim Myers.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with our hearts full of gratitude, an opportunity to serve this great community. We ask for your guidance and wisdom that we make decisions that impact the lives of those that we represent. Lord, bless each member of council, clarity of thought, humility, and the spirit of collaboration. We pray for the citizens of Fairfield, that they may experience peace, prosperity, and unity. We also pray for our public safety leaders, that those that protect us, we ask that you protect them, guide them during difficult circumstances that may arise. Holy Spirit, inspire us to be instruments of your will and grant us peace. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Myers. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Brill?
Here.
Councilmember Bessel?
Here.
Councilmember Paulus?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
All righty, show all present. Any agenda modifications for tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on. Is there an executive session request?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Thank you.
All righty.
I'd like to make a motion to have executive session by the rationale stated by the city manager.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Davidson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brill?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessel?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
All righty, thank you. We have a few special presentations. That picked up right there? Yes, it did. Cool. We have some special presentations this evening that we're always glad to see. We're swearing in some three police officers. So, gentlemen in chief, you guys can come up here. If you're a family member of them, you're welcome to walk around the room wherever you want, to shoot any kind of picture you want when we do the badging or anything. This room is yours. So, you have to shoot pictures. Yeah, a couple of family members are going to be doing the pinning. Yeah, come on up. I'm going to turn this over to the chief for introductions.
Okay, so tonight, I'd like to introduce you to three of our newest police officers who are here tonight to take their oath of office. So, starting from the left here, this is Officer Caleb Ake, Officer Daniel Harper, and Officer Ryan Hannan. They are with their wives and their daughter, who will be penning their badges this evening. So, a little bit about them, they most recently graduated the academy. They're currently in their field training program and hopefully be out on the streets soon. And most of you that know me know that I like to recognize military service. All three of these individuals up here have or are currently serving in United States Military, United States Army for Officer Ake. Officer Harper was in the Marine Corps and the Army. And Officer Hannan is in the United States Marine Corps. All right, so I'll pass it back to the...
It'll be a good night for the Marines. 暂会在这里稍等，一会儿再聊，大家请稍安勿躁。All right, gentlemen, thank you very much for being here. We're really honored in your presence to be for us. If you would state your name, or I'm sorry, put your right hand. State your name. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Ohio, and the Charter and ordinances of the city of Fairfield, Ohio, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of police officer for the city of Fairfield, Ohio during my continuance and said office. How about that? There you go. Now, we'll have their spouses or friends designate a person, pin them, their badge, hit it real hard when you get it in there. You get it, get it sticking. Anybody wants to shoot pictures? I'm going to get out of the way. It happens all the time. And then we'll do a little group picture here when we get them all up there. I'd have to ask, are we at like 188 or 90 or 189? Oh, my gosh. Yeah, congratulations. I ride with these guys about once a month, so I've seen a few of these I've already seen out here. So, we'll do a couple of pictures. Thank you. Now, speaking of Marines, if you are a young Marine, why don't you step up here, gentlemen? All of you. And then, I don't know which one of you is going to be prepared for the big, long speech, but I'd like for one of you or the leader explain what the Young Marines does in this community and the surrounding Cincinnati area. So, were you doing that or was...
Thank you. The Young Marines is an organization for boys and girls between the ages of eight and the completion of high school. We teach teamwork, leadership, and discipline through a healthy and drug-free lifestyle. We enforce veterans appreciation. We call it our attitude of gratitude. We also do a lot of community service, and we lead a drug-free life. So, our main goal is to be out there in the community, spreading the word about a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, how to say no. We do a lot of role-playing on peer pressure. We do a lot of encampments. We do leadership school. It's Corporal Furness, sorry. Corporal Furness down there is going to leadership school this summer, where he will then become a sergeant. So, the more rank that they earn, the higher in the program they go, the more responsibilities they go. They have traveled, my daughter was in the program, she traveled all over the United States. So, this program offers just an immense amount of opportunity for our youth.
And age group?
Eight to eighteen.
Eight to eighteen. And that prepares them for when they get out of the course to move right into the Marine Corps, hopefully, and it's a good recruiting charge. Well, we appreciate everything you do in the community and around the Cincinnati area, so I've done a proclamation. Oh, give me a second here. There we go. Says from the office of the mayor. Whoop, better get out of there. The city of Fairfield is pleased to recognize the Cincinnati Young Marines for their impact on the Fairfield community. And the Cincinnati Young Marines reach thousands of youth in our community each year through ongoing drug demand reduction efforts. The missions of the organization is to raise awareness about the dangers of drug use, including street drugs and overdoses, as well as gateway substances. The Cincinnati Young Marines contribute hundreds of hours to drug education, 5K awareness events, community drug fairs, and whereas in 2024, the Cincinnati Young Marines received an award from the DEA for their commitment to the education and community impact. This year, the Cincinnati Young Marines are partnered with the DEA in the Turn Cincinnati Red Campaign, in honor of Red Ribbon Month, which honors DEA agent... There you go. I didn't read that ahead of time. I should have, I'm sorry. Camarino, who gave his life in the fight against drug trafficking. And whereas, it is only fitting that the city of Fairfield recognizes the Cincinnati Young Marines in the following manner. Now, therefore, I, Metrodus, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, Cincinnati Young Marines Day in the city of Fairfield, Ohio. And on behalf of the citizens of this community, I thank the Cincinnati Young Marines and its members and leadership for the years of dedication given to the community. Further, we offer best wishes and successes in all endeavors. Thank you, guys. All right. You know, we were talking about the Young Marines. Now, we're going to go to an old Marine. Historical, old as he just said. Joe, would you join us up here on this? We got something for you. Be careful coming up through here, and I got a chair for you sitting up there. Don't want you to go running like you did when you were in the Marine Corps. He was in the Marines, he's 90 years old, and was in the Marine Corps, what, a long time ago? Have a seat right there. You got it? All right, right on down. There you go. Cool. I'll get that back to you tomorrow. Okay. Well, I tell you what, I have a proclamation to read for this gentleman, but before we do that, I want to tell a little bit about him, and maybe the opportunity, somebody in the audience to say a little bit. But this is Joe Schwartz, Mr. Joe Schwartz for the city of Fairfield. He's been a builder. He started here in 1961. That first house, the family that's sitting here is right there, and their mom and dad bought that house. You see the Wiseman's back there? You saw them, Joe and Viv? Yeah? And Jill? And he sold that house to their mom and dad. It doesn't look anything like that now after a few room additions that your dad did. But he also, that was the $16,400 on Vinnie Avenue, a house that he built. Can I still get that price from you now? $16,400? That was a pretty good deal. Seventeen-four. The newspaper was wrong. It was tiled bath and an L-shaped living room and built-in oven and range. There's the sales contract with your mom and dad, so I didn't know it was going to be that small. Your mom and dad's house, oh, they splurged. I knew your dad wouldn't do that. That surprises me. $18,204. So, and he probably added something on. He did, he extended something over the hood and I can't, a hot point range and some other five-fold doors. Isn't that wild? That was the whole contract. So, some of you may know Pleasant Avenue down here along the front, we call sometimes Riegerd Square. Well, it's really not Riegerd Square. Riegerd Square was really behind it, back by that church, but it kind of inherited the name when Dave Riegerd built the building on the end. So, Joe, and I was a kid, I was a newspaper boy here, by the way, so I was delivering newspapers right along that road at that time. And you see that slide right there? That's the Gold Star Chili, Van Womers Meat Market. So, what would happen is people would buy, these old houses were along Pleasant Avenue, and Joe would buy a house and build a store. Buy a house, build a store or two. And that's why there are actual fire lines, and you can see them, if you look at them, you can see where these actually sections were. There's Joe in 1965, when he was tearing down the house to build the dry cleaner and those. He also, how many of you have been to Homarama at one time in your life? I know there's a, you know, Homarama's pretty cool. Well, Joe was the president of the Cincinnati Home Builders Association, and he brought Homarama to Fairfield. Not only once, not only twice, but I think three times. He brought Homarama to Fairfield like three times in the Reswin area and off of Reeser and, and so there was some Homarama right here on Reswin and Reeser Road. Now, when people say he built the city, this is pretty impactful. Every subdivision there in yellow is what he developed. So, you might say he built, what, a third of the city? So, or at least developed it. You wish. So, everything in yellow, he developed. So, that's, he already touched it. Then, one of the funny stories was, if you know Joey, well, let's see, I don't want to call you cheap, so let's see here. He's frugal, and when he started, he didn't want to hire a realtor. So, he would sit in his first house there and with banners around and would sit there until it's sold, when you'd be your own realtor out in front. And he said his first house on Mississippi Drive, he was out there on a Saturday, and a police officer came up from the State Patrol, and he thought, oh, gosh, what did we do? And the guy came in and looked at the house and bought it. Isn't that right? Yeah? And paid you what you're asking for, I think he said. Yeah? So, so, there's the Schwartz family, and you know what? I don't know if any of them made it here. Didn't see Sonny. So, there's the whole Schwartz family, my dearest friend JoJo there, and his son Zach, Joe in the middle, and Rachel, Sonny, and Marlene. So, and how about that? You see, that got the whole family up there, buddy. What do you think, huh? So, at this point, I was just going to ask if anybody had a little funny memory that they wanted to, you know, you don't even have to come up here. I could pass you the mic. You do? Mr. Wiseman, he's used to carrying a microphone.
Thank you. I'm Joe Wiseman. My father bought Joe's first house. And to add a little background to the story, which I think is important, is that my father, before he had come to Joe to buy a house, went to another man who took all of his money. And he was pretty much broke and needed a man of integrity. And Joe was the one guy he could trust. And... But, yeah, it was just an important time in his life, coming out of the war, two kids, and pretty much broke. And not just that he was proud of owning that first house, but I think the most important thing was the relationship he had with you. And I think the friendship that he had with you and Marlene and JoJo meant the world. I'm sorry.
Anybody else want to say something? Brad?
Hey, Joe. My name is Brad Rotis. Through my father, I got to spend a lot of time with Joe. And I would say, we went to lunch hundreds, if not maybe thousands of times. And so, as a, just as a quick comment, he was basically a second grandfather to me. And, you know, I got to hear so many stories. He was a living encyclopedia for Fairfield and let alone world history. But it was so cool to hear his heart. I got to hear his heart many lunches and how much he cared for the citizens and cared for just people in general. So, I just wanted to say thank you for being such a good model on so many times that nobody really got to see or hear. And so, I just wanted to tell you that from me, it was so great to spend so much time with you, you know, as a second grand, or as another grandson, so, yeah.
Yeah, they had said that Joe didn't use realtors. Well, eventually, he did. I was manager of the West Shaw office, and my agent, Carl McCormick, was his agent. And I knew if we didn't sell one of Joe's homes every nine days, I better go to his office because he was coming to mine, so...
I remember Carl. That's funny. All right. Anybody else want to? Several people have said they'd be here. I know, I could give this to Mike to Harold, and he'd go, now Mitch, I told you, I'm not going to talk. I got him down. So, I got a proclamation for you. Let's see if I can get through this. I've known this guy since I was about five, so just a couple of years. All right, from the office of the mayor. Whereas the city of Fairfield is pleased to recognize Joe Schwartz for his contributions to the community. And whereas Joe moved to Fairfield in May of 1959 and lived on Blackburn Drive, he was elected to serve on city council at an at-large position from 1968 to 1970. And whereas the first two homes Joe sold were on Mississippi Drive for approximately $18,000 each, and he built his first subdivision on Cavalier Court just off of Sims Road. From that point, he built and sold thousands of homes in Fairfield and developed most of the city. And whereas Joe has been the owner of a restaurant, I know that one, shopping centers, the Cleveland Indians at one time, and a newspaper, and a Sheraton Hotel. And whereas Joe has been the recipient of Citizens of the Year for the Fairfield Rotary Club, he served as chairman of the Butler County Republican Party and for many years and was a founding board member of the Fairfield Community Foundation. And whereas Joe, Marlene, and their son JoJo will always be remembered in their, for their generosity and kind, loving spirit to the city of Fairfield. And it is only fitting that the city of Fairfield recognizes Joe Schwartz in the following manner. Now, I, therefore, Metrodus, the mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, Joe Schwartz Day in the city of Fairfield, Ohio. On behalf of the citizens of this community, I thank you, Joe, for numerous contributions you have made to this community. Further, we offer best wishes and successes in the future's endeavors. How about that? So, I was in his office a few months ago with him, and that's over here off of By Birds, and he said, look at that wall up there. I said, what part? These pictures everywhere. And he says, I'm missing one key from one mayor. Do you know who that would be? So, here you go, buddy. I'm going to read what it says here on the back. Presented to Big Joe. We called him that my entire life, Big Joe. It was JoJo and Big Joe. For your many contributions to the city of Fairfield for the past 60-plus years in celebration of selling your last piece of property in the city, we congratulate you and sincerely appreciate everything you've done for our beautiful city. There you go, Joe.
Thank you very much.
You want to say something?
No. Thanks. Thank you very much.
That's good. All right. All right. Any citizen comments that are here? Besides what we've already done? Cool. Counsel reports. Down this way. Thank you. Thanks, pops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one report. The Water Division will continue its annual fire hydrant flushing program this week and will be flushing hydrants for the next three weeks. Hydrants to the west of Pleasant Avenue will be flushed June 10th through June 12th. Hydrants between Pleasant Avenue and Wenton Road will be flushed June 17th through June 19th. Hydrants between Wenton Road and South Gilmore Road will be flushed June 24th through June 26th. The Water Division performs hydrant flushings to improve water quality by removing buildup sediment from the public water lines. Residents may experience discolored water for a short period of time during or after flushing efforts. If this occurs, residents should run cold water through several inside faucets for five to 10 minutes or until the water becomes clear. The city will utilize its social media pages as well as the Code Red Call System to provide more detailed updates to residents as necessary. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a item from the finance team, and again, as I say all the time, thank you to Ms. Davenport for her outstanding support and her entire team. But as I always tell my kids, it's wonderful when your money makes money and you don't have to do anything about it. And so, from that perspective, I have a report here that basically our interest income grew 8.75% year-over-year from January to May, year-over-year. So, phenomenal, 1.7, just north by 1.8 million dollars in interest income. So, phenomenal job. I had a ton of questions, and Diane obviously jumped onto those, but great job for the entire department and everything that we do. That's all I have.
Mr. Kraft?
Can't believe you're going to let me have this one, but I just wanted to thank you to the citizens for your interest in the Sustainability Commission. We conducted interviews this last week, and when I say that there is a qualified group of individuals that came out, I think pretty much everybody involved was just really blown away at the engagement, at the interest, at the sincerity of the collection of individuals that came out. Some individuals were on other boards within the city, saw the opportunity on the Sustainability Commission to tie into more passion or more things that were closely aligned to what their likes and interests were, and it freed up some additional positions in the city for those committees. So, it was just something very unique and very, very special that happened last week with the interview. So, I just want to say thank you to all who were involved. Very excited for the future for this commission.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a little short report. Stockton Station Drive between Seward and Mack was paved last week and is now open to the public. Also, there are some road closures on Seward Road this week between Route 4 and Mack in order to replace curb, curb ahead and street paving. So, just be careful in that area. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
The next grooving on the green is this Thursday with Tom and the
The next grooving on the green is this Thursday with Tom and the Torpedos. They're a tribute band to Tom Petty. Next Friday night is our first Fridays by the Lake with Jordan Frank from Six to Eight at Marsh Park. And last week, more honeysuckle was removed along the paved trail to clear the view of the lake at Marsh. Also, the two shelters at the lower end of Harbin Park were removed to make way for new, larger shelters. And those should be completed by late summer. The remaining shelter replacement at Harbin Park is planned to take place over the next twelve months. And then, I believe, we'll be totally done there, right? That's it, isn't it? That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Speaking of Marsh Park, I know several of you because I've seen you are, the Splash Pad is a huge, huge success. Every time I'm up there, there is a lot of kids having a blast. So, yeah, it's kind of wild. My little grandson just, he gets Splash Pad out pretty quick. Splash Pad, Splash Pad. So I know where I'm going every time. All righty, let's see here. We have, let me see, a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Two copies of the twenty twenty-six tax budget as to be tentatively adopted for the city of Fairfield of Butler County, Ohio, are on file in the office of the Clerk of Council in the city of Fairfield, Ohio. These copies are for public inspection and a public hearing on said tax budget will be held at the Fairfield Municipal Building, fifty-three fifty Pleasant Avenue, Fairfield, Ohio, on Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock P.M.
All right. Thank you. Any additions or deletions to the previous minutes? Any comments for the public hearing? All right, we'll close it then. That count that. Pretty easy, huh? And then unless we have some additions or deletions to the minutes, the meeting will stand as approved or stated. Let's see, old business, public safety. Mr. Paulus?
I have an ordinance, amending ordinance number one six six dash eight four, the codified ordinances of Fairfield, Ohio, section one forty-five point oh six. The city of Fairfield, Ohio, relative to non-immersion C services, transport, I want this to stand as the second reading.
Thank you, sir. All right, new business. Motion second for title only. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Mr. Timmer for public relations.
We have one ordinance and one simple motion tonight for community and public relations. The first ordinance is to amend the codified ordinances of the city specifically pertaining to the composition of the Sustainability Commission. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Brill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to amend section one six six dot period zero one of chapter one six six Sustainability Commission of ordinance number one six six dash eight four, the codified ordinances of Fairfield, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And second before I read this, I was going to comment about the qualified applicants that we did have. It was a great, great bunch of people that came out, just so impressed and so grateful that we have that the quality of people that are wanting to volunteer with this commission. So really, really excited to get it launched. So I have a simple motion to appoint the following residents to the Fairfield Sustainability Commission effective June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Lauren Duncan for partial term expiring three thirty-one twenty-six. Donna Canon, partial term expiring three thirty-one twenty-six. Gail Willis, partial term expiring three thirty-one twenty-seven. Megan Lyons, partial term expiring three thirty-one twenty-seven. Brendan McHugh, partial term expiring three thirty-one twenty-eight. Alex Sarber, partial term expires three thirty-one twenty-eight. Jessica Betrich, partial term expires three thirty-one twenty-eight.
All right, simple motion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Development Services, Mr. Timmer?
We have two ordinances tonight for Development Services. The second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with KZF Design to update the comprehensive plan. City Council adopted the Fairfield Forward Comprehensive Plan in December, two thousand nineteen to guide development, zoning, economic growth, and infrastructure improvements for the next ten to twenty-five years. Staff recommends a mid-cycle update at the five-year intervals. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute a job creation incentive economic development agreement. Economic Development Manager Nathaniel Kalin will present the details.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm back again to highlight another economic development win for the city. Meyer Tool has committed to bringing a new manufacturing facility to our community to be located in an existing building at five seventy-five Quality Boulevard. Meyer Tool is located and headquartered in Cincinnati, and they are a high-tech supplier to the gas turbine and engine industry. The company plans to lease approximately seventy thousand square feet at the Quality Boulevard site to relocate a portion of its manufacturing operations from the city of Cincinnati. Meyer Tool plans to invest more than six million dollars, including one million dollars in building improvements and five million dollars in machinery and equipment. Within three years of establishing this new operation, the company plans to employ at least fifty full-time employees. That includes thirty-five that will immediately relocate from Cincinnati and fifteen new positions that will be added. Anticipated future payroll is expected to exceed three point eight million dollars annually. To facilitate this expansion and new location in Fairfield, Meyer Tool is requesting a job creation incentive. Based on our tax incentive guidelines, we are recommending a thirty-two percent eight-year job creation incentive. This incentive would provide an annual grant to the company of up to thirty-two percent of the new remissable income tax collected from the payroll at the site. As you recall, City Council established the structure for the job creation incentive program within the new tax incentive guidelines that were adopted and approved in December of two thousand twenty-three. This would be our second job creation incentive approved. Approval of the first item on tonight's agenda would authorize the city manager to execute the job creation incentive agreement with Meyer Tool. And just to kind of reflect, five seventy-five Quality Boulevard, it's a very nice, modern industrial building. And when it was vacated last year, we were really hoping for a win here. And we're really glad to see a quality manufacturer locate in the building. So to share a little bit more about the company and the project, I'd like to introduce Kevin Slattery. He's their Director of Strategic Planning. He's going to tell you a little bit more about the project and the company.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, my name is Kevin Slattery. And as he said, I'm the Director of Strategic Planning. I've been with Meyer Tool for about twelve years. Meyer Tool has been around since nineteen fifty, but it turned to aerospace and turbine manufacturing about nineteen seventy-one, current owner. We are a privately-held company. We have, we're worldwide. We have locations in Europe, Canada, as well as several in the United States. We're really happy to have the opportunity to move to Fairfield for several reasons. Number one, it is in the aerospace corridor and we are in the aerospace business. Number two, there is a, there is a real, because of that, as well as other things, there's a real wealth of good talent for what we want to do and it gives us an opportunity to further develop and grow our business. We've been in this, we will, the business that we're developing here is MRO, Manufacturing Repair and Overhaul. We've been in this business, this market, for about fifteen years. We've outgrown our facility and our opportunities in Cincinnati. So this is a great opportunity for us to increase our operations. The things that Nathaniel told you about what we want to do and what our growth expectations are are somewhat conservative. We expect over a five-year period or more to significantly exceed what he told you. So those are the reasons we would like to be here. We really want to, we really look forward to it. We're very happy. Took a lot of work and there was a few bumps in the road, not anything to do with Fairfield. But it really, we're already working on it and we expect to be operating in the fourth quarter. So any questions?
Kevin, you're nine miles from GE Aerospace. Why aren't you moving the whole plant here? Let's go. Come on. I know where you are on running road there. Let's bring it on.
You know, we talked to them about it and I don't get it. But, you know, they said, "Take your time." But they are very happy that we're moving here. I will say that. They're pleased to see that we're making that investment. As far as the RNO business, GE is our largest customer. So we're really looking forward to it.
Thank you for picking our city. Ed Green is a lifetime friend of mine and next-door neighbor.
Oh, yeah?
So I have to tell him tonight what's going on. He'll be excited. He probably knows it through his buddies, but he's retired now, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You guys have a great company, great company, great company.
Please tell that, say hello when you saw him.
All right.
Anything else?
Any questions? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Look forward to working with you. We have our grand opening in the fourth quarter. You will all be invited. Thanks.
All right. Let's see here. All right, Mr. Craft?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a job creation initiative, economic development agreement with Meyer Tool for the creation of new jobs and payroll on Quality Boulevard and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
And motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The second ordinance I have, Mr. Mayor, is to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with KZF Design Incorporated to update the comprehensive plan and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second, third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council?
Yeah. Scott, did that go out for competitive bid with, for KZF? Did that go to a competitive bid for design?
I'm going to have Greg answer that if you don't mind.
We issued a request for qualifications for, so it wasn't a competitive bid, but we requested qualification from planning firms throughout the Cincinnati region. The contractor that we used last time was not available to do this type of work. They don't do local planning anymore. So we had to advertise. So we advertised around local planning firms within the greater Cincinnati region.
Okay. And they came in qualified, they're fully vetted and so forth?
Yes. KZF is the lead entity for this and they're going to use McBride Dale. Both of them are widely regarded as two of the best planning firms in the region.
We've used them before, I think, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Davis? Oh, that's right, there's a comment. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Davis, Mr. Timmer?
We have one ordinance tonight for public utilities. The ordinance is to authorize the city manager to enter into a design-build contract with Malink Solar for a one point five megawatt solar array at the city's wastewater treatment plant. As a hedge against volatile and increasing energy costs and in an effort to become more operationally resilient and sustainable, staff has requested the advancement of a solar array project in connection to its wastewater treatment plant. The array will be constructed on approximately six acres of underutilized farm field immediately east of the plant. Conservatively, the project will generate a total lifetime savings to the city of approximately one point seven to two million dollars. Thank you.
All right, wow. All right, now, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a design-build contract with Malink Solar for a one point five MWDC solar array at the city's wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency. I move to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council?
Yes. So first of all, congratulations to Adam and the entire team for taking this on and to our newest member, Sustainability Leader Jillian, on this. Mr. Timmer brought up some really good points. I want to kind of elaborate on those if you don't mind. The entire system is a hundred percent made in the USA. The control systems, the inverters, all the communication pieces that work with our SCADA systems that control wastewater as well as water, but in this case wastewater. It's completely, I'm going to say fire-walled off, so it cannot be impacted in any other way. But it's all made in the USA. I've checked with the manufacturer, which is phenomenal. We all saw what just recently happened with Duke. It made the paper, I think the increase in, in cost per kilowatt hour went up almost forty percent to ten point something or another. Mr. Timmer, council gave Mr. Timmer authority to, from an aggregate standpoint, to go ahead and act to that to, for a lower rate, which is great. But we are still vulnerable for that, that energy usage. And by the way, the wastewater system is the highest energy usage in the city. Is that right, Adam? It's our single largest use of energy in the, in the city.
That is correct. In the city-owned inventory, yes.
It's one point five megawatts or actually about one point eight. And it actually gets us pretty close to completely running that. Is that accurate?
So the system was designed with a couple of objectives in mind. We ultimately sized it. It's going to account for about fifty-three percent of the total load. We had additional evaluations of some larger-sized arrays. Due to some cost considerations and return on investment analyses, we decided that this one point five megawatt array was kind of the sweet spot. But yeah, it will offset at least half of current energy consumption at the facility.
So the payback is roughly about twelve years on the investment. For an asset that's going to, with little love and care, over thirty years. So we're going to get some real significant, what I call cash flow out of this and good use of taxpayers' money on this. So I love the idea. I applaud the entire team for the ingenuity and the innovation that they had. And I was able to go to Athens with a few folks and actually see this in motion. So thank you.
Good job. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right, finance and budget, Mr. Timmer?
We have four ordinances and one resolution tonight for finance and budget. The resolution is to adopt the twenty twenty-six tax budget for the city and submit to the Butler County Auditor's Office. The tax budget requires the city to estimate revenues and expenditures for funds which derive revenues from real and personal property taxes. The city of Fairfield has two funds which derive money from property taxes, the General Fund and the Fire Paramedic Levy Fund. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with ComDoc for the purchase of desktop workstations and laptops. The next three ordinances are for appropriations. The second ordinance is for supplemental appropriations. Specifically, this ordinance requests additional monies to account for the mid-year property casualty and liability insurance renewal. The contractual appropriations total three million, three hundred eighty thousand, five hundred dollars and include three projects in Public Utilities, Development Services, and the Information Technology Division. The non-contractual appropriation totals two hundred seventy thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and includes seven projects in the Public Utilities, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation Departments and the Information Technology Division. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have five items. The first one is a resolution adopting the tax budget for the city of Fairfield, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-six, and submitting the same to the Butler County Auditor and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Second item is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with ComDoc for the purchase of desktop workstations and laptop equipment and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second, third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The third item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number- The third item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 158-24 entitled, "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2025." I'd like to make motion to suspend second, third readings, please.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
The fourth item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 158-24 entitled, "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2025." And these are the contractual appropriations. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And the final item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 158-24 entitled, "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2025." These are the non-contractual appropriations. I'd like to make motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Madam, uh, meeting schedule, please.
Monday, July 14th, council manager briefing 6:00 p.m., regular meeting 7:00 p.m. Monday, August 11th, council manager briefing 6:00 p.m., regular meeting 7:00 p.m. Monday, September 8th, council manager briefing 6:00 p.m., regular meeting 7:00 p.m.
All righty. Thank you all for, uh, being a part of the, uh, Joe Schwartz presentation and the others as well, but, uh, I think that was very well received. I think he, uh, well deserved and I think he had a good one.
Good job.
Thank you. All right, we'll see you in executive session.
Just for the record, there, there may be a need for business after executive session, so we will likely or possibly return here for some additional business. We'll need someone to run the recording. I don't know if that's been arranged. I did not think ahead on that and I apologize, but we'll need...
We're gonna do in his office.
My office?
Your office.
Oh, yeah, he's there.
I'll turn on my microphone.
Oh, my gosh.
Mr. Myers, turn on your microphone.
I did.
Oh, okay. All right. We're now returning to the regular meeting of the executive session, and it is my understanding that the council member Myers would like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to consider a recommendation of the fact-finding and negotiations with the FOP bargaining unit.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the fact-finding report and recommendations in the 2024 MED 12-1397 and 2024 MED 1398, City of Fairfield, Ohio, and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 166, police officers and supervisors, and directing the city manager to submit the employer certification of the fact-finding vote to the Serb and representative of the FOP Lodge 166 bargaining unit.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.